I will take roll call, I'm Ryan.
Here.
Sam Flippo.
Here.
McCarty.
Here.
Arstenson.
Here.
Mannigan.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
And Chair Henning is absent, so I will need a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Turner as temporary chair of the meeting.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Turner as chairperson of the meeting.
All right, motion by Sam Flippo, second by Mannigan, any discussion? All right, Ryan.
Yes.
And Flippo.
Yes.
McCarty.
Yes.
Arstenson.
Yes.
Mannigan.
Yes.
And Turner.
Yes. Any announcements or push-ups?
No.
Okay, I'm here.
Sure.
Okay. I have a motion for approval made for 2022 planning until I board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by McCarty, second by Sam Flippo. Ryan?
Yes.
Sam Flippo?
Yes.
McCarty?
Yes.
Arstenson?
I'm Steve.
And Mannigan?
Yeah.
Yes. Motion here. Okay. Um. Any public comments? Anybody online? No, okay. Old business. New old business?
No.
Hang on, nice place. R and D business.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Sherman. This matter comes before you for site plan review of the property coming on Saturday, one Anita Avenue. The applicants ask how management. This matter is a site plan review. Property is at, okay, seven ten Anita Avenue. You can see behind me, there's a context map. Property specifically just between Anita Avenue and Canadian Railroad by way to the south is Keable Street. There are several properties to south specifically. There is a creek, it's a wetlands that are currently owned by the village of Antioch. And to the south of that, industrial property, light industrial. And then to the east of this property, we have to eat up. You need a market complex. And then a little bit to the south of that, there are several town halls. So there really is a mixed use of this area. The village is contemplating, identifies areas, goes residential. The applicant this evening is coming for you for a proposed parking lot, which would have the proposal to park their trailers ancillary to their proposed business. If you don't, if you're not aware, Ash Pallett is a large industrial building where they do pallet recycling on McMillan. They have several sites in within Anita Business Park where they have some storage facilities of their truck trailers. They have some serious challenges, but truck trailer overflows, rough tark. And what they have identified is they were seeking to use these eight acres again as like the site plan to use that part of their truck vehicles. Mr. Krishison, who's a land planner, is actually here and hopefully able to present the actual plan and answer any questions you have. As you recall, this property, the previous past year, the applicant came before Land Commission with the proposal to construct three apartment buildings. There was general support for that proposal by the Land Commission, but at the Build Board, there was lack of support for that proposal. So what the applicant is now seeking is assistance with M1 zoning. This property is zoned industrial, the applicant seeking approval of their site plan for a proposed storage of their truck trailers. So directing your attention to the site plan. And as you can see on the site plans before you, the main access point, there'll be a new proposed new access point out of Anita, which will provide a two lane access road, which will basically be constructed through wetlands. One thing I should mark off right away is you see this property surrounded by wetlands, extensive limitations to this property. So only a very small fraction of this property is developable or buildable. Advocate is seeking again to use eight acres, a portion of the eight acres for this proposed sixty-six lots, sixty-six parking space, a storage facility. You see that the proposed access road also provides direct access into the existing main building here. There's existing industrial building, which is owned by Ash Pallett north. You can see that there's a sub street to the north, which provides direct access to that industrial building. That industrial site has two access points on Anita. So in effect, this proposed development has the potential of having three access points or three points of access ingress or egress on Anita. Also for emergency purposes, there are multiple access points. Overall, the applicant proposes a parking lot. The road itself is twenty-four feet, which should provide sufficient width for semi trucks. Overall, the applicant has identified a site that has sixty-six spaces for parking, for trailer parking. Again, this will only be used for semi trailer parking, which will lose ancillary to the proposed use of the building or the use of the actual applicant's business. You can see that the overall width of the drive aisles are over sixty feet. In view of fact, these are semi trucks and there are parking spaces of eleven by fifty, obviously substantially larger than our standard parking space for the obvious reasons. Again, I've already explained that overall site, you see that the overall site is surrounded by mature shrubs and mature trees. This gives you an idea, this is a truck vision of what the property looks like on Anita Avenue. So obviously during the one month of the year, this proposed site would not be visible from Anita Avenue. Directing your attention back to site plan. Again, so with regards to context, it's all imperative to look at the context of the site itself. What is the general area? What is the general character of the area? Again, as I've already outlined, to the west is the Canadian Nationals, the western boundary of the property above the Canadian National right away. To the east are is Anita Apartment Complex, so it's multifamily. To the south is a village owned property, which is currently vacant with a creek and extensive wetlands. As I've already highlighted, the applicant is not proposing to remove the existing trees and shrubs. They're proposing to basically maintain the general overall character of the surrounding area as a natural screening to this proposed storage facility. Through the existing wetlands, as you can see on overall site plan, the area which is highlighted color wheat or white beige, is proposed, I'm sorry, existing wetlands. In accordance with the Lake County watershed requirements, there is a minimum buffer requirement. So the applicant has identified in the site plan as before you, a hundred foot buffer for wetlands in accordance with municipal and Lake County regulations for the watershed requirements. With regards to the landscape plan, again, the applicant has a bit of a landscape plan. You can see, I let Mr. Krishison walk you through the landscape plan, specifically the arthropoles and thirteen cherry trees and twenty-one other tree trees. Staff is providing them the substantial credit because again, the surround, the extensive landscape being caused by mature trees, shrubs, which generally surrounds this property are being maintained and therefore the applicant is being given a credit for the existing vegetation, which will be generally used for screening. As you all know, in accordance with the village's site plan reordinance, any outdoor storage of any type of vehicles or goods or merchandise or insulated products from a primary user requires one hundred percent screening. Based on that, applicant is proposing the cooperation and construction of a perimeter fence with only surround property. The majority of the perimeter fence would be an actual steel cyclone fence with fabric material, which would provide one hundred percent opacity. There is a portion of it, which would be a wood privacy fence along the northern perimeter of the property or northeastern perimeter of the property. You can see in the landscape plan, there is a perimeter fence all the way around the site, which provides one hundred percent screening, assisted with the village's ordinance. With regards to landscaping, because of the proximity to the wetlands, obviously there's a wetland buffer, which would mitigate any type of negative impact potentially of any type of pollution or influence released from the trucks. As an additional precautionary method, staff would request or recommend that maybe some best management practices be explored in the parking lot. There is a potential of maybe converting some of these asphalt islands, which are, you can see in the parking plan, to actually naturally green areas, which which helps in infiltration of any pollutants. So that's something we ask the applicant to consider, is there is in fact support for this proposed use of this proposed site plan. With regards to the actual stormwater, you can see there are a series of stormwater, small stormwater ponds that will be constructed around the parking area to provide stormwater management. So any obscene releases of stormwater would flow into those small ponds. Again, all the stormwater would be retained within these ponds. Nevertheless, because of the proximity to wetlands, we would again be interested, ask the applicant to consider best management practices and consider plus potential of having a treatment, treatment streaming or what they call best management practices for stormwater management, which again would be consistent with the natural sensitivity of the area. Again, I've already highlighted extensive wetlands, the property best, the vast majority of this property is existing wetlands. So again, I think it's important from an environmental perspective that we continue to be very sensitive to those wetlands as always since overall site. Now with regards to lighting, we have requested a photometric plan. As of this date, we are not, we have not received photometric plan. We are not in a position to make any recommendations this evening until staff has had full opportunity to review photometric plans. We think lighting is critically important because of our residential, developed residential units east, especially apartment buildings and lots of family housing. Because of the size of this property, because of the significance of this property and its location, we think that any potential lighting, especially in the winter months, there could be a potential negative impact because of lighting on the residential areas in the east. Therefore, staff is not in a position to make any recommendations at this point until we had a full chance, opportunity to look at photometrics. In conclusion, the property is zoned without want. This proposed storage facilities ancillary to applicant's corporate use. And therefore, we concluded from administrative interpretation perspective that it is a permitted use. Once we flood the Plan Commission this evening is the actual site plan, doesn't meet the village's site plan requirements. So at this point, we're not in a position to make a recommendation. We're looking for a general discussion about the site plan this evening and we formally request a continuing, continues case. So with that, I'll conclude my staff part. Again, Mr. Krishison said is actually here this evening to answer any questions you may have. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Krishison.
So for clarity, you're asking for continuation.
That's correct. As you can, please your case.
Yeah. As was mentioned, if Mike mentioned, we are here.
We have to swear then?
No, this isn't a public care.
Okay.
Yeah, we are here in presenting the concept, the multifamily project. Which report use, favorable comments, which we appreciate. We got some village board and they seem to see that they've been the same way. So we, my client, who by the way apologized for not being couldn't make it. And we have submitted under site plan review because village staff felt we should do this. We have requested to go on site, put some of the cross out, shoot topography, which is part of any engineering process. And I believe Jim, time and ability manager said, well, you're going to have to go get site review first. And usually shooting the bottom for the first thing. We got in there, obviously determined where the wetland locations were. We surveyed all of that. We wanted to go into the photography to come up as an engineering, so we get a lot more information to come to the table here. That being said, as you can see on our plan, the area gray is where the proposed parking is going to be. Again, like I said, this is a permitted use in that one history. Why involve setback requirements under the zoning ordinance and have followed all the requirements of the US Army Corps of Engineers in stormwater management in this, in this plan here. We've also done a landscape plan. We submitted electrical fixtures, submitted examples of sensing. And by adding photometrics at this point or photometrics, you're usually done at the time of preliminary engineering or engineering. I guess my question too, if I could ask, Mike, you'd have a standard of a half foot candle at the property line. And the parking area is three hundred and forty feet off Anita Avenue, the west. And I think the closest building, residential building is over five hundred feet away. And by, and by using the standard of a half foot candle that the village has, we'd have to comply with that. And we will supply photometrics at the time of engineering. And I'm sure we're not going to get any problem with that. I think, you know, with LED lighting, when proposing out the technology such that we could almost hit down to zero foot candle or minimal point one foot. And again, the lighting, my client has expressed an interest to have motion sensors at most of the lighting. Just they have enough lighting for security purposes. And then when the truck comes in, lights go on with the motion, we need it off. It's a situation where he has a lot of truck trailers, picks up balance, comes in, drops them off. And what they like to just drop the full one off and the other, have the truck go over and get an empty one. A problem with the empties and holes at location where it's stored. And this will be Antioch's best kept secret here in this location. The big one just depleted that, probably even though it's there. It's a good, good many feet off the road. There's a lot of plant material, even in the wintertime. There's enough, even with the bees down, there's enough trees and branches and things that really screen it out. You really definitely look to see inside. And we've done a landscape plan where we have some evergreen trees along some of the key areas, some other trees along the entry road. It'll screen and the fencing as well. And I think at this point, we'd like to move ahead. They're trying to get out of anything. We will supply the photometrics and come back if you'd like to see them when we get some engineering done. But we'd like to go ahead and proceed and do our, what's necessary in a property to shoot the pot, to clear a little bit out of some of that plant material in there. I might add, if you go back and look at old area photographs and found he has back to the thirties, forties, that this area was farmed and then it became an area that was filled in for a number of years. And it's just gone through old construction, probably for the last thirty, forty years. But then the plant material in there, it's not really of any quality. So again, we're looking to proceed and to get something done out there. And again, we'd have to come back to the photometrics and some of the other engineering. Obviously, you have to be by the staff, you have to be viewed by your engineering department. We'd just like the favorable sponsors here today to continue that process. Any question?
All right, so I think we'll open up for discussion. Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, is this going to be asphalt paved, this parking lot?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Let me ask this to the village. Would this be better served that this was gravel so that you wouldn't have the runoff of the water next to the wetlands if you had just crushed gravel in there for, from the ability?
I, you know, I think I get the answer to that. I think you know, gravel and especially the thickness that we have to have for the trucks is going to be compacted enough. It's going to be just, it's considered an impervious surface anyway. And then to get back on the best management practices, if you plan on doing that, islands on the interior, we'd really like to look at another way, maybe doing all the best management practices on a periphery. Because trucks of this size, we really don't want to have islands. I mean, it's not like it's a car parking lot where that's kind of the easy thing to do. But we'll look at that during the engineering process. We'll, we'll take staff recommendation to what they do. By the way, stormwater is three different things. One is, is strictly the control of the runoff, the holding of water. And stormwater tension facilities do that and then they release them at a slow rate. The second is to, is to clean the water before it enters the different creeks that run through the area or its ultimate watershed. And the third now is to keep water on site, giving that water an opportunity to infiltrate on site before it leaves the site. And we will, we have to attempt all three of those things. Not to attempt, we have to comply with all.
Okay. No, that's, that's the only question I have at this time.
Okay. Chris or Sam Flippo?
Mrs. Sam Flippo, yeah. You know, I just, you know, and generally I don't have, you know, concern that you haven't already, you know, without seeing the the topography. I mean, my, my only concern with the site is, you know, the drainage and, you know, into the, the wetlands and making sure there aren't any pollutants or anything, you know, harmful to the wetlands or the, you know, adjacent storm watershed. So without the topographic plan, I know you guys are working on that, you know, and then I, and then I, I don't think we saw a lighting plan either. So those were the only, you know, questions or comments that I had at this point.
Okay, Mr. McCarty?
I've got a few. First of all, this wetlands dumps directly south under depot goes to the Sequoia Creek and then goes out to the Channel Lakes, correct?
Um, I don't know where the, the ultimate watershed is, but it does, it does flow south.
Yeah, it must be.
So, so you made a statement early on in, in your presentation that this is been looked at by the Armored Corps of Engineers?
We had the wetland delineation was done and we mapped it in the US Army Corps, Army Corps of Engineers concurred with the wetland delineation.
Wetland delineation was for what portion thereof?
The, the portion that's on the property that was delineated.
Okay, was it the entire wetlands that was delineated?
Yes.
Okay.
I might add that we also need a, we're going to need a permit from the Army Corps to cross that wetland.
Yes, because you have two, two positions where the driveway crosses the wetlands. They have to have a special permit for that availability to go across those wetlands, correct?
Right. And it's, it's a roadway crossing which is a much different permit than a regular filling would entail and entitled.
Right, but you have to have more of a small bridge, so to say, to cross that.
Well, yeah, minimal cross.
Okay. I've seen other things happen, but Army Corps of Engineers permitting is about a year out?
We'd like to start on as soon as possible to get the engineering done, once we get the photography.
Timing, timing for the Army Corps of Engineers permitting is about a year out presently?
You know, I've, I've been done one lately, but I've heard it's gotten better. I don't know what's because of its, they don't have as many applications at this point, but.
Okay. The hundred foot buffer zone on the east side, I understand, the thirty foot buffer zone on the west side, I'm questioning.
I believe that's a fifty foot on the west side.
It showed thirty in, in the paperwork that I had. You're going to have more engineering available. Who's your engineer firm?
We'll have, probably have D and R consulting do it. Your idea is thirty foot.
Okay, D and R consultant for the final engineering of the property or just just consulting for the wetland issues?
Ballinger Environmental did the wetland delineation. And our helped up with the, with the flags and Manard will follow up with the engineering of the parking lot driveway.
Okay. I drove by the property a few times since I've seen this come before us. A, previously when it was going to be apartments and B, now that it's being proposed as a parking lot. There's the, the foliage that's around, surrounding the outside, a lot of it is like invasive foliage, buck thorns and otherwise. There isn't, there isn't, there isn't a lot of really good quality, what, species that are, that are there for trees and foliage. And we're proposing to just leave that in place?
Well, the area that's not, excuse me, not going to be disturbed, we're going to try to leave it the way it is, yes.
All right.
Because if you do go in there and start disturbing them on that stuff.
Mr. Garrigan, Mr. Garrigan, you'll work with the applicant on possible foliage around the exterior perimeter closer to the roadside that would be visible to the apartments across the street?
So I, sorry, Mr. McCarty, are you asking for a clarification? Are you requesting additional landscaping laws?
Yes, yes, additional landscaping. Are we recommending additional landscaping on the east side towards the, the residence?
No, we're, we're, at this point, we are totally comfortable with existing landscaping that's there. Meaning there's a sufficient buffer. If it's the inside of the Plan Commission, they incorporate additional comforters or something like that to provide additional screening that's provided.
It's just, it's just tough to see a bunch of buck thorns as being the, the, the buffer zone there. And I mean, I understand that they, they grow everywhere, but they don't really give good coverage. They do during the summer, but.
Summer, we we did, I think the staff report did, yeah, I'll find some potential concern while landscaping. The question is, does it make more sense to park the landscaping closer to the, if if there's concern of visibility, would there be more project, project, more rate official other means of natural landscaping along the among the fence line versus along the avenue? It might, it might just look unnatural to your mind of conifers there, I'm not gonna do that.
So
We really felt, when we looked at this, is that we felt the landscaping would be a little more appropriate in the area uh just to the uh east of the the proposed detention pond there for a couple of reasons. One, that land's gonna be the land that's gonna be disturbed anyway, and we felt the landscaping would would serve much better there and be a more effective uh because it, because it's farther back and it's covering the short end of the parking lot.
Yeah, I I I I get the point, but wouldn't it be nice to put our best foot forward and and give a good look from Anita at least, so it's not looking like it's overgrown like it is now, just
Yeah. And it's overgrown for down in all through the uh village property and into the south.
I understand that.
And, you know, and again, you know, as far as screening, I mean, nearest building's five hundred feet away and the roadway's three hundred forty feet away.
I understand that.
Anybody that screens anything in the whole industrial park to this extent, so
Yeah, I'm not, I guess, I guess I'm not just looking for screening. I guess I'm looking for a better look. So, just thought process.
All right.
Um, I drove by there also and uh noticed that there was a trailer on the north side of the existing building that that Ash Pallet owns that was completely tipped over and on its side uh along with a lot of damaged truck uh truck trailers that were uh on that property either in storage or just sitting there or waiting for repair or whatever. Is that what he's considering trying to put on this site? And and if he is, I I uh think it would be much better suited rather than right next to the building to the north because it's it is more visible?
Uh, you know, he obviously is not here and not totally familiar with this operation, but I gotta think that uh those trucks off-site there are waiting for repair of some kind. But if he did have this, you know, parking lot, obviously, they could wait for repair within this area, so
Okay, and then the the other question is, on the parking lot, uh, your length of each of the parking spaces is how long?
I believe, what was it, sixty-six feet? Yeah.
It was
About seventy feet, it should be, seventy, seventy-five?
Eleven by fifty. And I think that was, that was based on what on his uh the majority of his trucks is what he called it, so
Yeah, it's a little short. And then what's the space in front of the parking space for tur- that's sixty feet? It should everything I've seen like up in Uline and others is like seventy-five for the truck uh trailer, seventy-five for turning and and placement. Just, just a thought process. You might have to reduce a little bit to get get your access. Uh, turning point on the north side of the island. Uh, that looks pretty good. On the south side, it looks a little tight to that to that uh pond.
Yeah.
The one, the one turning point on the north side looks tight as you just enter, but it looks good. It wants you gain access.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that with uh, once the engineering's solidified, we have the the turning program put on it, so
Right, and and obviously, we'll run this past the fire department. Now do we have anything on here for for uh fire hydrants? If something was to happen to a, to a uh trailer in this space?
No, we're not extending any utilities to the back of the site at all.
A lot of, a lot of the uh parking facilities that we use for uh trucks and trailers, uh, we require something to have some type of fire capability to put out a fire. I mean, otherwise, we gotta tank something in and our, you know, it's a lot different.
Well, you know, we could extend uh out of the stormwater detention area, extend out a pipe to uh to a a manhole so they can drop the uh the site that is there.
Okay, something to keep in consideration. Um photometrics, obviously, we need that, and we need some more final engineering to discuss more about this, but that's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is our
Michael, can you, can you point out where the crosswalk is on here? I can't, I can't tell based on this drawing on Anita. And would that be present in the context?
I know, which crosswalk that would be to the park or
Yes.
There is one, I believe it's to the south.
Yeah.
So, um
I'm I'm wondering where is it in relation to that driveway?
It's further south around here. Apartments are right around here. I took that picture, that picture I showed you, I took that from the very northern perimeter of the apartments. So I think the crosswalk to the, to the sense that to the park was right down here. A little bit further to the south.
Because where is the drain? There there's a drain that's right next to it right now, so I'm concerned that that little retention pond right there, that that's where the crosswalk is?
No, no, no. The detention pond, put the aerial up there.
Okay.
So here's the park, obviously up here, there's the crosswalk, right, right here, right here?
Oh, that's where the drain is. I think that, here's the, here's the creek, and here's the drain underneath the road here.
Okay.
And then the crosswalk comes across at the same point right there.
And then where would the proposed driveway be?
It's the, the driveway's right here.
Okay.
I remember, I mean, this, uh, there won't be a lot of trucks aren't gonna be coming and going. You know, during the day, there might be a few more, but uh it's not a real high body.
And this one for the record, this is, this is not a truck terminal, right? I made that clear from day one. So if it becomes a truck terminal or a record, this would not be a permitted use. A freight truck terminal would not be a permitted use in that one. That would be an to felony. So for the record, this is not, clearly, you're not a truck terminal.
Okay. Um I think that's all maybe my questions at this point.
Thank you. Scotty?
Um, I do have a question. So, um can I ask, and I don't know that Mr. Garrigan or the membership particularly know, but do we know why this was not the original proposed apartment, multi-family complex was not?
Based on my recollection, there are several trustees that's not comfortable with more multi-family, and they did not believe this was an appropriate site for multi-family. So I think there were, there's a mixture of perspectives on multi-family. I don't know if there was complete consensus on multi-family. There are some couple trustees who are not comfortable with more multi-family. I think my reflections are some trustees who are not comfortable with multi-family at this site.
All right. Um I am a little, I was a little more concerned about, you know, the noise, because obviously, as you're backing trailers, they have a lot of the intentions to be, I don't know, air braking, whatever it is, but they're they're noisy, um, but it sounds like based on what they were describing, that this is gonna be more daytime than nighttime?
Well, it could be nighttime, but I think you're relating to the backup DVD that that goes off.
Yeah, and just the hydraulic piece, you know, the air that comes out when your truck's back in.
Well, air braking usually wouldn't make, but they were out of the road doing that, but the way we laid it out too is that we, they'd come in, pull in, rock, without even backing up in a lot of cases.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, and the only other thing, and then many of the other commissioners also addressed it, you know, the lights, the, it's just less interruption or um noise and light that doesn't affect the surrounding homeowners and
Again, I I I just like to reiterate is that, you know, this, this piece is really a I think if if you look at this piece in relation to to all the other industrial pieces of the south or north, so self-storage, the north is wide open, lights everywhere, if you look inside there. Uh, this one, a lot of people aren't
I do like the fact that you're talking about like sensor, timed uh motion sensor, I mean, it's just like
Yeah.
That's all.
Um, I think every question that I had, that I asked at this point, um, I would also just like to reiterate as well, for me, it's um, I saw lighting for a living, so I fully get the, you know, the technology that's there, the fog handles would I might also something to consider, something that I'm thinking about is just, you know, you're living in those apartments there and you're up on the second story. Are those two-story or three-story, they're like
I, I think they're two-story, so
Okay.
But again, you know, if I may interrupt, most of the windows are facing north and south.
Okay. I just, I'm trying to think of just what this is gonna look like in the winter time. You know, it's, and again, the fog handles are only gonna they're gonna be cold, right? It's gonna be right to the property line. Um, just some heat lit up like a Christmas tree there, so if you see, you know, aesthetically, what's in the light, um
Sure.
So yeah, that's pretty much, um, before I would be comfortable moving forward with something like this, I would need to see, you know, that form factor, maybe understand what the lighting looks like. Uh, I also, um I go a lot with what Mr. McCarty said about just in general, you know, the environmental, um, you know, study there, what that looks like, making sure that all those boxes are checked, and eyes are not still off, but that's just my
Well, you know, I might have, again, step in for us, but I guess it's a very questionable, we could we would like to get some kind of approval based on coming back or something, so we can get out there and otherwise, our hands are tied. We would just like and if we don't get some kind of uh an approval, it says our approval based on supplying the photometrics, if you plan on doing, I mean, we have the supply engineer, but we'd like to go to that point, get out there but it will take a little bit of clearing and underbrush where the parking lot is. And that's, that's basically where we're at, like, why we're here in person.
Mr. Garrigan?
Yes, I think trust me, you heard, we're brought up by a great point. For the record, I did make a point that this, for the record, this will have to be sort of truck terminal, which applicant has never, we care that applicant, never discussed in day one. It's often simply the fault we use for truck trailer storage. The other point I wanted, this would not be a surplus site for storage of this surplus pallets. Uh, anything would have to be truck trailer, only truck trailers. And and for the record, as they asked the applicant, if that's what we're talking about, we're not. Other than what, any of the storage is flatbeds or pallets or pallets or any, any ancillary storage other than trucks? Is that correct?
Um Yeah, I think so. I mean, I don't think there'd be, again, again, it's people totally grant me, but I mean, there there may be a time where there'd be a couple trailers there with pallets because they didn't have time to get them through their process. But they would, you know, pick them up there and take
If if they, if the pallets were fully enclosed with the truck trailers, I don't think that would be issued. Like, if it's a flatbed with or open storage of access pallets. Now, you know, maybe we want to consider a natural stipulation, make sure that this does, this does not become that type of use. Uh, there are some, we're working with applicant right now, some whole of our issues about pallet storage, and we still want it to become uh secondary site for pallet storage, other than what we're talking about for a truck trailer. So I guess there's pallets in a fully enclosed truck trailer. That's, that's a different analysis versus just pallet storage or pallets on a flatbed, flatbed. Is that my point?
Yeah.
We're looking for uh a uh motion to um bring this back in the future meeting. What what are we looking at for a date? And will they, will they have, will they have uh photometrics and uh some more engineering to help work this through the process for us?
Well, clearly, you don't, you're trying to have for a for a metric plan. Um, if if you desire to have additional landscaping, you need to work with the applicant on some additional landscaping. Um, you talk to clearing engineering, you typically don't be caught, you know we do that, we lost the total ball.
Do we, can I, can I, can I, can I possibly get something from the Army Corps of Engineers saying that everything is taken care of on their end for the sensitivity of the of the wetlands going to um Sequoia Creek and then passing beyond that into the Channel Lakes? Just something, something in writing from them to make me feel more comfortable that we've, that we've done our due diligence on that end.
Well, again, I think, you know, with everything that's been requested, I think it's all gonna be done, but, you know, can we get some way of going out there and shoot topography? I mean, we can't get through site plan review to do engineering or anything until we get out there and shoot the topography. I mean, we're, we're not trying to get out of anything. It's just that, you know, the cart's before the horse here. You know, we'd like to be able to go through site plan review. We have to do all the final engineering, all the final stormwater, the permits through the Army Corps, that all has to be done. And it has to be approved, but we gotta get to that point first. And your village manager told us to come here first yet to do this before we could get all our due diligence done. Talk to Jim Kime and ask him to let us get out there on the site.
I guess collectively, we feel like here we got a motion.
So, uh, uh, Mr. Turner, are you the chairperson of the meeting?
Yes.
I mean, is the general consensus, um, as far as the PCB commissioners goes, I mean, uh, to make a a motion to continue this to the next meeting so that some of this due diligence items like the topographic plan and the lighting could be submitted so that we could actually make a motion to approve the site plan or?
Again, if we care to the applicant, I will try to be fair to everybody. Um, I think we are requesting that they go through site plan review before it's made daring or to go out there. So I think some of this would be subject to final engineering review. As you know, we also have a standard stipulation, every set point we approve is a standard stipulation, subject to engineering approval. So SLAS and SODD, these things, discussing SLAS engineering would be as part of preliminary final engineering review. Our engineer, whether it's with time or HR three, they have not a train, but the engineering, most specifically the permitting that's required to go there on the floor. So no work would be allowed, construction work would be allowed on this subject site until all permitting, all federal or state or local permitting is completely defined successfully in the house. Now, to require them to do a topo, bring that back, that would probably, that obviously, timeline wise, uh, they'd have to approve all from the engineer to go ahead and prepare a topo, that would probably require at least several months for
Okay.
What what does the applicant need to do a do a topo? Does he have to clear the land?
We would like to clear the area where the proposed roadway is and where the proposed parking lot is.
Okay. So, do you think that we can get at least what, uh, Mr. McCarty, uh, mentioned, something from the um US Army Corps of Engineers, just so that we know, you know, that this isn't going to be introducing any kind of uh pollutants or impact the surrounding wetlands or the, you know, existing watershed south of the site?
That's the connection. That's the connection right there that that I'm looking at. I mean, this is a US waterway and and the Army Army Corps of Engineers has to give a preliminary blessing
Right.
on, on more than just saying here, you can delineate your wetlands, but you, you want to do a site, you could submit the plan that you've already put together to them, at least to get an idea that that wetland isn't going to be negatively impacted somehow or something, some type of, you know, correspondence from them.
I don't know if there needs to be any.
Even if it says that it's under review and, and we need final engineering, then we have direction to give you that approval.
Right.
Well, I think, you know, it's, it's, it's an endless circle. We could supply that drying and the Army Corps is going to come back. You don't have enough engineering.
Okay, well, that gives me.
They have, they have concurred with the wetland delineation. We cannot do any work with any wetlands in proximity until we get the permit to cross it with the roadway, and then we have to go through the engineering with the village, anti-access certified community, if I'm correct. They'll all look, all look through the stormwater.
Yes, we're certified.
Part of the permitting process for the crossing, the Army Corps a little bit at that.
Alright.
But we just like to proceed, we're getting, we seem to have our hands tied here.
Not, not completely. I mean, we still need more information, and we definitely need, you know.
And we want to give it, we want to get out there and shoot the topography.
A lighting plan, a lighting plan is very critical to the whole thing too.
At this stage, I mean, you have standards at 25 candle at the property line, and we'll probably have 0.1 or 0 almost. There's 340 feet from this parking thing to the.
I absolutely understand, but we, we still have things that we request our applicants to come before us with.
Right.
And, and staff has already reiterated that at the beginning of this hearing, saying that they, they request that, that we continue this until we get that information.
And a lot of your applicants have a lot more engineering done to this stage than they can supply.
Okay, um, I, I think at this point, so me personally, I, I feel very strongly in the, with what, this is, Sam Lippo and Mr. McCarty just said, I don't know if we're going to get to a point right now where we can feel comfortable as board to approve. Do we have a motion for a continued to?
Yes.
I'll second. To continue to the next meeting, Mr. Garrigan or?
Garrigan, would, would it be next meeting?
Yes, I would do that. There would be sufficient time to work with Mr. Patterson on getting a four method plan for the next meeting. That's, that's verification.
And, and, and take, and take, take in the, the comments that we've made about everything so that we get as much information as possible. I know that it's impossible for them to have all the final engineering. I know that it's impossible for them to have everything perfect, but give me as much as you can to make it easier for us to make that positive recommendation.
Yes, we can work with applicants to reach, get some clarification, what communication should be given on, or I, I don't know that real estate and the law, but we can get some additional clarification.
If, if I may, I'm sorry, if I may, if I may get this board to request village staff to allow it to get on site to shoot topography that we need to, we appreciate it. We have to go to village board for site plan review?
Yes.
Okay, can we go one step next?
Obviously, if you go to July's, July's planning commission, you don't get to go forward, so the best case, you'll decide it in July.
Mr. Garrigan, do we have a problem with allowing them to do topography on, on the site? Clear, clear the areas where they can.
I think that, I don't want to speak for the village engineer, okay, so my understanding, you know, I don't think there's.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry.
I don't think there's an issue, I'm sorry. Hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I don't think there's an issue per se with the topo. It's a clearing. I think it's concurrent. I understand why the applicant wants to clear certain areas so he can do it, do the.
Proper topo, right.
Yeah, but I think the concern is doing a clearing before a site plan reviews. We are kind of the catch 22. We'll be more than happy to confer with the village engineer on this and, and see if we can work something out.
That, that would be, that would be, you know, acceptable in my book as part of a condition for this, for, for them to have that ability to, to do some topo. Because it is, you know, you need both, and we, we need to see what's going on too in order to get it done.
That's fine. I'll, I'll work with village engineer and see how, how much, you know, making necessary arrangements to get a topo. On the verbal applicant, how we, theoretically, we sign off on allowing them to do a topo, how could be that can be done?
Right, and, and, I mean, it's not like we're saying that they're going to do a clear lot and clear all the, you know, greenery away from there because they want the greenery to stay as a buffer, so we get it.
Yeah, really, really quick here, I think, I think Miss Spang can add a question.
To my, and I was just going to say, I mean, what can we do to get you onsite to be able to start doing some of this stuff? That was my only concern. I, I agree. We have a lot of questions and concerns and, and all that, but again, like Mr. Garrigan said, it's the catch 22. So we need to do something to help the applicant, at least be able to provide us with those documents and, and the information that's needed. So I agree, whatever we can do to help get him access to this property to be able to do the items that were requiring, which we need to, we need to do something.
I'll make that part, I'll make that part of my first on the motion.
Your motion to continue is to, to allow them access to try to get as much of the topo done as they can without, you know, overly disturbing the entire lot.
To work with village staff and the engineer, correct?
Yes, correct. Now, I'll second.
Okay, hold on one second. Just, just for the record, for a practical perspective, I, I think we, if that's the case, then we're going to need to continue this at least for two months because there's just, on a practical level, there's just no way they're going to have a topo by the next planning commission.
Yeah, so we want to continue it to the, the August meeting.
To give the applicant the fair opportunity, he may have a, a, a window that he fits it in, and then we, we could have it at the next meeting. We can always continue it again at the next meeting if they haven't completed.
Uh, you know, if we get out there and shoot the topography, we will be able to do the engineering, at least preliminary engineering, give you a lot more information to look at. And, and something you can feel comfortable with. Well, let me ask you this. I'm looking at the site plan itself, the layout and everything. There really aren't any objections to the layout. Your objections are, are you want more information on the photometrics? And you asked about more engineering, and that we could do that, that, you know, once we have the topography and start going through the process. But my ask is, you really don't have an issue with the site plan, right, or?
Well, you know, it's all details at this point. I mean, you know, like just the, the runoff on, on, on the blacktop, what we're going to do right at the edge of it to help, you know, clean up the water. That's all engineering, and that's all final details that we work out with staff, and then you present it, we go from there. That's, I, I understand that. I, I don't have a huge problem with, with the layout, maybe the turning radius on a few things, but again, that's all details.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, anybody else?
I mean, here's, here's the other thing. What else can we do with this property besides make it a park?
I think Mr. Ash would take an offer if you're interested.
I understand completely.
Okay, so do we, do we have a motion on the table then that we need to?
Yeah.
And a second to vote on?
Can, can we get the motion repeated?
Yeah, so just to clarify, the motion on the table is to continue the site plan review to the next meeting and allow the applicant to work with village staff and the engineer on access and topography.
Yes.
Is that an accurate first and second motion?
Yes, second.
Okay.
We get a.
By Sam Lippo.
Okay, no more discussion?
Any more discussion?
No.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sam Lippo?
Yes.
McCarty?
Yes.
Kirstenson?
Yes.
Mannigan?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion.
Second.
By Ms. Mannigan, second by Ms. Kirstenson.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sam Lippo?
Yes.
McCarty?
Yes.
Kirstenson?
Yes.
Mannigan?
Yes.
Turner? Yes.